Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to Scottsburg's Common Council here on May the thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. We're calling our meeting to order this evening and we begin by prayer and pledge allegiance. So if you all would like to stand up, I'll give the prayer and we'll say the pledge of allegiance, which is to our right here. Father, we just come before you to bow our heads, our hearts, and to thank you for a day of life, day of lightening, Father, that you just joined us too, and we are so thankful. Forgive us for taking them for granted. Father, we have so many years, so many days, and so many months. So Father, we just come before you and thank you for life itself. Give us wisdom, give us discernment, Father, protect us, keep us from pride, keep us, Father, from evil ways. Thank you for Scottsburg and for your blessing upon our city, we pray your blessing upon our citizens, our residents here, Father, that you just keep us in your... we love you, we praise you, use the name of your name. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen. Thanks for any signal. Next on our agenda is a roll call by Clerk Treasurer Jan Hardy.
Tim Hall.
Here.
Rick Cosart.
Here.
Kevin Smallwood.
Here.
Christian Evans.
Here.
Mark Mickelson.
Here.
Next on our agenda is the approval of minutes of the April two thousand twenty... April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four meeting. We have a motion to... something is presented.
I'll make the motion.
Rick Cosart makes the motion, or is there a second?
A second.
Christian Evans seconds. Any questions, comments, concerns, type votes, changes? If they're not, I'll remember, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed, unanimous. Next on our agenda this evening is a public comment period. The City of Scottsburg City Council will accept public comments. Individuals wishing to address the council will be asked to come forward and state their names for the residence. The person will have five minutes to voice their opinion. Remarks should focus on issues and not be used to target city employees or elected officials. Would anyone like to come forward this second? Going once, or twice, propose a public comment period. Going down to new business. New business is Resolution twenty-two-four dash R dash four... uh, four A, a resolution of the City of Scottsburg honoring the Scottsburg High School varsity basketball... basketball team three. Congratulations. First of all, are you sure they were here yet?
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. Are everybody here?
They're here.
Are you all here? Okay, we're doing three firsts. Sorry.
You want to do three firsts?
Yes, I didn't know that you guys were all here. All good? Okay, we'll do three firsts then.
Common Council, City of Scottsburg, Resolution number twenty-two... twenty-two-four dash R dash three. A resolution of the City of Scottsburg honoring the Scottsburg High School jobs for American graduates, JAG students. Whereas the jobs for America's graduate, JAG program, is state-based, national nonprofit organization dedicated to helping our high school students of promise of experienced challenging or traumatic life experiences achieve success through graduation. Whereas JAG is a resiliency building workforce program that helps students learn and demand employability skills and provides a bridge to post-secondary education and career advancement opportunities. Currently, there are one hundred and twenty-five JAG programs available throughout Indiana. Whereas JAG students receive adult mentoring while in school and one year of follow-up counseling after graduation. Indiana's program consistently graduates approximately ninety-five percent of participants and students choose to continue their education after high school. The JAG program is funded through grants provided by Indiana Department of Work and Development. Whereas Scottsburg High School is proud to have a JAG program with many active participants. Scottsburg JAG participants recently had the opportunity to join students from across the United States from San Carlos, Missouri, in April for a fun-filled and action-packed three days at the National Career Association's Third National Career Development Conference. Whereas students competed in competitions ranging from business plan creation and public speaking to creative problem solving and interviewing. They also participated in workshops on such topics as dressing for success, resume writing, and attended the career expo. Whereas through the team's hard work and determination, Scottsburg High School JAG program placed first out of forty states, making them the national champions and bringing home pride to themselves and their school. Now, therefore, being resolved by the Common Council of the City of Scottsburg, Indiana follows. Section one, that the City of Scottsburg congratulates the Scottsburg High School JAG... JAG program and their accomplishments in two thousand and twenty-four, and wishes the program participants much success in their endeavors. Section two, that the Clerk Treasurer of the City of Scottsburg... see, I'll transmit copies of this resolution to the JAG program coordinator for distribution. Section three, this resolution shall be effective from and after adoption by this council and compliance code thirty-six dash four dash six dash fourteen. So I would ask council, pass this today, do we have a motion for this resolution to go forward?
Make a motion to approve.
Christian Evans makes the motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, Tim Hall, second on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you very much. So at this time, we would ask the JAG students to come down and see here. Natasha Williams. Is that you?
Yeah.
Congratulations, group.
Thank you.
That's awesome. Congratulations. The sophomore. How do you see it within?
Asian.
Asian. Asian. Congratulations. Connor Marcos. Come down, how are you, sir? Good to see you, sir.
Good job.
Number one of the nation. Congratulations. Bobby. Thank you. Congratulations.
Can you guys all see enough? I'm sorry, can you see the picture?
Do you want us to go front or...
Whatever. Probably better.
Probably can't see all the...
Yeah. If you guys can see now.
You want to... you want to have...
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. It's a sweet thing. Dan, you want to...
Get in.
You got to get the old guy in.
Three then. Right, out three then.
Put your back.
Three. One, two, three.
It's all very...
Good job, Bobby. It worked out.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for your hard work. Okay, common council of the City of Scottsburg, Resolution number twenty-two-four dash R dash four. A resolution of the City of Scottsburg honoring Scottsburg High School varsity basketball team. Woo-hoo! Whereas Scottsburg High School varsity boys basketball team had a historic season in two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four that culminated in a state championship. Whereas the Warriors defeated Silver Creek sixty-five to fifty-nine to win the Scottsburg IHSAA sectional championship game. Whereas the Warriors defeated Batesville eighty-four to forty-six to win the Charleston IHSAA regional championships. Whereas the Warriors defeated Evansville, Boston fifty-eight to forty-five in the Seymour IHSAA semifinal to advance to semifinal championship game where the Warriors beat Garen Catholic seventy to fifty-four to average last... to avenge last year's season-ending loss and to claim a spot in the state championship. Whereas the Scottsburg Warriors went on to defeat South Bend Saint Joe Husky sixty-seven to fifty-seven in the IHSAA Class III-A State Championship Game at Gainesbridge Fieldhouse in Indianapolis on Saturday, March the thirtieth, in front of a record-setting crowd. Whereas in the championship game, Jack Miller scored thirty-two points to lead the Warriors to victory. It was the third highest total in Class III-A State Championship history. Cody Clancy added twenty points for the Warriors, including two three-pointers that gave him a total of eighty-two on the... on the season, a new school record. Whereas the Warriors finished the season twenty-five and five, which matches the most wins in a season for the nineteen sixty-eight, sixty-nine Warriors who went twenty-five, went amazing twenty-five and one. Whereas the Warriors basketball... the Warriors varsity basketball team consisted of Kaden Richardson, Cody Clancy, Wyatt Sellers, Jack Miller, Dare... Dare Bowles, Ethan Robinson, Kaden Howell, Noah Bagwell, Garrett Bolden, Matthew Wiki, Jared Luttrell, Brandon Cox, Peyton Thomas, Brailly Clayhammer, Cameron Reed, and Jason Jackson. I hope I got those correct. Whereas the Warriors were led by Assistant Coach Taylor Funk, Assistant Coach Christian Evans, Assistant Coach Dustin Marshall, Assistant Coach Donald Connor, and Head Coach Eric Richardson. Whereas the Warriors' achievement has brought immense pride and joy to the residents of the City of Scottsburg, inspiring the youth and fostering a sense of unity and community spirit. You guys are sharing. Now, therefore, being resolved by the Common Council of the City of Scottsburg, Indiana follows. Section one, the City of Scottsburg Common Council, knowing as the council hereby extends its heartfelt congratulations to the Scottsburg High School basketball team for their remarkable season and victory in the state championship. Section two, the council acknowledges the dedication, hard work, and sportsmanship displayed by each member of the team, coaching staff, and supporting personnel throughout the two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four basketball season. Section three, the council recognizes the positive impact of the team... the team's achievement on morale and spirit of our community and commits them for being exemplary role models for the youth of Scottsburg Scott County. Absolutely. Section four, the council declares March the thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four as Scottsburg Basketball Team Day in honor of their outstanding accomplishment and encourages all residents to celebrate and support the team. Section five, a copy of this resolution shall be presented to the Scottsburg High School basketball team, coaches, and school administration as a token of appreciation from the city and its residents. Section six, this resolution shall take effect immediately upon its passage, passed and adopted on May the thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. So do I have a motion to pass this resolution?
Language.
A motion made by Christian Evans. Who seconds?
I'll second.
And Kevin seconds that? Any questions, comments, concerns? If they're not, I'll remember, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Now, let's talk about... we have certificates. We have the certificates and we want to talk about a little bit what we're going to do here as well. Maybe after certificates, we can talk, right?
Either way.
Okay, let's just go... let's just go forward. So some are here, some are not here. I have Noah Bagwell. Not here.
There. We'll line up.
You want to see if the kids come back?
Yeah, if they come back, one at a time. You can probably call one at a time and then we'll direct them up there and get a picture of them.
Okay. Nope. Noah's not here. Sean Basham? Nope. Grant Bowling? Dare Bowles? Thank you very much, sir. Absolutely. Good job. Good job. Cody Clancy. Come on in. You guys are a joy. I can actually top your head. Donald Connor. Very much for your help, brother. Brayden Cox. Christian Evans. I got here. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Absolutely. Taylor Funk. Come on in. Thank you very much, sir. Good job. Absolutely. Kaden Howell. Thank you, sir. Good job. Jason Jackson.
Yeah.
Woo-hoo!
Thank you, buddy.
There you go. Brailly, clean it. Claire Emmer. Jared Luttrell. Good job. Thank you, buddy.
Yes, sir.
Dustin Marshall. Jack Miller. Thank you very much. Lucas Miller. Thank you, sir. Good to see you. Eric Richardson. Absolutely. Thank you. Cameron Reed. Good job, sir.
Absolutely.
Hank Richardson. Ethan Robinson. Peyton Thomas. Matthew Wiki. If anybody heard of Wyatt Sellers, come on down. There you are, buddy. Thank you guys very much. What a joy it was to see you, right?
I'm going to get my titties, too.
Could you hold the trophy up? Could you hold the trophy up, please?
Jay, wait, come out.
Mark squished in there somewhere.
You guys squeeze in a little bit. Kevin, squeeze in a little bit.
We're getting it down the list.
Good.
I'm like this. Hello, everyone. Stand up. One, two, three.
Jay Burgers.
Okay. I'm not one. Hold up. One. Two, three.
All right, one thing we're going to do for you guys as well is we're looking to push, you know, guys, we call it the witches' hut on I-65 with the water tank. Because if you're going south, planning on trying to get a van or a score and put on that... on that tank, you're winning. Of all four areas coming into Scottsburg, we're planning on getting signs and putting them up for twenty... twenty-three, twenty-four state championships. So just make that count. Okay, being the best.
Okay.
We have an interlocal agreement between the City of Scottsburg, Indiana, and southwestern Jefferson County Consulting School System regarding the sale and purchase of a police vehicle. We have had probably three vehicles out there that I had kept. As we keep these, I had kind of wanted to look toward the possibility of a reserve force. For some reason, I kept those cars, but it's kind of been decided by my chief that maybe we don't need that right now, and so we're going forward and selling some of these cars. So we have one of them here by... Hannah bought one of our vehicles here three years ago, two, three years ago, and they came wanting another one. So that's what this is about. I guess we would need a motion to go forward and sell one of our chargers. It's a... it's a charger.
Two thousand seventeen.
Two thousand seventeen. And so... a motion to go forward to sell this?
Seventy-five hundred dollars, and this is specifically with the school district for their SRO, and they have already approved... they approved it all there. They approved the last one. It's pretty much a fair market value. That car... fair market value to that car is about seventy-five hundred.
It's a police car, so you're limited to be sold. So it still has lights, sirens, so that's what they paid for the last one. And according to my brother...
The car is just one in the back.
Correct.
Twenty-seventeen charger, forty-nine.
We had one back there that had not been taken, the lights and stuff on. Yes.
Yeah, so about a pack and package. Yeah. Okay.
There was another one that was white, everything's been taken off of it. There was a black.
Did they need one with lights on? But they did.
It'd be a regular police one.
Do you need anything else?
No, I mean, it's just a regular car that that district wants to use for their school resource officer. We take those, rotate them out, you know, every so many years, usually about a four or five-year period. This vehicle had less miles on it at the time, but those cars do... they're older cars. I mean, you know, they've served a purpose for us and it's served a good purpose for them as a school resource officer car.
And I believe their school resource officers are very good. I believe they have an agreement with the county or the city over there.
Yeah, they're like a full officer, basically, yes. So it's legal for them to have it, so there's no problem there.
Seventy-five. I found kind of a issue today a little bit, and I found one at St. Clair Auto Incorporated in Fulton, Indiana. It's a twenty-seventeen charger, old police car, has a hundred and thirty-one thousand seven hundred miles, and they're wanting ten thousand.
You say wanting or sold?
They're wanting right now with ten thousand, three hundred dollars, so with a hundred and thirty-one thousand on it.
I will say when we offer these as a trade-in, you know, to the dealership of where we buy them from, they only offer us around four thousand for those cars. I mean, you know, because they got a lot of hours on them, they might not have a whole lot of miles, but they got a lot of hours on them because of, you know, they're going to calls, they're setting out there, and they're running quite a bit. That does change the value of those cars quite a bit. Okay.
Just making a police car... a former police car makes it worth less value, makes it worth half its value?
Well, I mean, it can because of the hours, you know, the hours that's on the vehicle itself, you know.
How many hours that car had on it?
I'm not for sure exactly how many hours it's got on it. I know they were going to look at it today. I'm not for sure if they did or not, or what the number is on it. Do they have an hour meter as well as a... Yeah, they should. Yeah, every one of them has an hour meter, tells you how many hours it's been used, you know.
Those vehicles do anymore. I don't know if that...
Yeah. Yeah, it should. Yes. I'll be honest with you, I think that's more money than... I personally think that it's worth... I mean, I think that that's good money for it. If they want... they want it, they're going to get a good car. I think it's a good deal for them, and it's a good deal for us. When I came in office in two thousand and twenty, I know they were giving us three and four thousand dollars for those. So I'll make a motion. Okay. Rick makes the motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Rick seconds that. Any questions? If they're not, I'll remember, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Next thing on our agenda this evening is...
Jay, we want to get you to sign the document. There, I'm going to stop you real quick if you don't mind. The updated agenda item that we got today on short notice, I think I can speak for the council, we're not going to be taking action on that. I think we need to figure out a better procedure. Obviously, the council does not create the agendas, so from the mayor's office, we need to figure out a better procedure to get council those documents ahead of time so that they can be reviewed, in which we'll make sure that we have all those items touched on beforehand. So if everyone's okay with that, we are going to table that, obviously, for now, and discuss later.
Going down to approve... anybody... anybody... any questions on that?
Yeah.
Going down to I and E, approved statement of benefits for Turek LLC. Jan?
This is just a procedure that we do. This is SAMTEC, basically. As you can see there under the contact person, this is just their real estate compliance of benefits, and they've been in business since two thousand and fourteen and started getting their tax abatements in sixteen. So that's a ten-year abatement, so that will be stopping in a couple of years, but that's... and according to this, we did send that to Josh, too, as far as I know, they are in complete compliance. There would be no reason why I would not think we'd want to go over and take this to the auditor board then.
Does new council understand this?
On protection basis, how many more years do they got, Jan?
Two.
Two more, I believe.
Tim, on that... on that sheet, because I remember when I first... I was trying to read this when I first went on council, there's four dates on that right-hand side. It's an estimated start date, actual start date, estimated completion date, and actual completion date. That bottom one, correct? Josh, that's the date. So it'll be ten years.
Going down to I D E, approve statement of benefits for Turret LLC.
This is just a procedure that we do, this is SAMTEC, basically, as you can see there under the contact person. This is just their, their real estate compliance of benefits, and they've been in business since two thousand and fourteen and started getting their tax abatements in sixteen, so that's a ten-year abatement, so that will be stopping in a couple of years, but that's, and according to this, we did send that to Josh too, as far as I know, they are in complete compliance. There would be no reason why I would not think we would want to go over and take this to the auditor for them.
Does new council understand this? On tax basis, how many more years of salary do I have?
Two.
Two more, I believe.
Tim, on that, on that sheet, because I remember when I first, I was trying to read this when I first went on council, there's four dates on that right-hand side. It's an estimated start date, actual start date, estimated completion date, and actual completion date. That bottom one, correct? Josh, that's the date, so it'd be ten years from that, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so it would be January fourteenth to twenty-sixth.
I have twenty-seven, I believe, because of the taxes or payment rears. So that's when it was completed, that new assessed value wouldn't have hit until the next year, so it's ten years from the change in the assessed value.
Got you.
That make sense? Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve, that's presented.
I'll second it. Christian Evans, make some motions, present. To accept the statement of benefits for Turret LLC, and seconded by, by Tim Hall. Any questions, comments, concerns about this? Bring down on, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, thank you very much. Next thing we have is a change of May twenty-seventh meeting.
We talked about this last time, I, I know we discussed historically how holidays have been handled, we would either cancel the meeting altogether or move to an additional date. I will actually not be here on May the twenty-eighth. Now, certainly you guys are more than, obviously welcome to have the council meeting that night, and so choose, but I think for right now, unless there's any objection, maybe move into June tenth, which is our regular scheduled council meeting, would be a better idea. I know Jan, I think, is going to be out of town on the twenty-eighth as well, so it's up to you all, obviously, but like I said, historically, we've either moved it a day or, or we've canceled altogether, so.
Good fine value, I'm trying to think of my calendar. I may not be here for the tenth, but.
Our June, June dates look like June tenth and the twenty-fourth, those month means those dates, so. Does anybody have any strong?
I'm right now. You want a default date in case something's urgent for me?
I'm fine with any date, I mean, my schedule's pretty open anyway, so.
I'll, I'll go ahead and just, let's go ahead and make a motion to, go ahead and cancel the regularly scheduled May twenty-seventh date and just proceed on to June tenth.
A motion to cancel May twenty-seventh?
I'll second that.
Or to June tenth, seconded by Kevin. Smallwood, questions? Bring down on, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, thank you very much. What else do we have for this evening?
Doesn't hear music on the square start this weekend as an announcement with Kayla Griffin on Sunday night, so maybe you might want to put that up there.
Okay, so basically.
Five o'clock, five o'clock on Sunday, Kayla will start at five o'clock, and then we'll have Michael Cleveland and Frank People starting at seven, so we'll have a full evening of music on First Street.
What day is that?
Sunday the nineteenth. That'll be the only one we have on Sunday, but we did that to work with Ms. Lisa's dance recitals the night before, so, and then other community events, so it's the only Sunday event that we'll have.
Okay, so Sunday, May the nineteenth, at five P M. So, you watching at home? Michael, come on down, free show. Yeah, there you go, can't beat that, can't beat that. What other announcements do we have?
I have none, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, or adjourn, thank you very much.